We have coffee.
Thank you.
Because I knew that.
Did you hear today up there?
No, I know that was a past moment. I don't know how I knew. Well, I know how I knew. But never said anything. Isn't that interesting? Okay, it's past four o'clock and we need to bring this meeting to order. Councilor Balfour is not here yet. I do not exactly know if somebody could send him a message, but kind of it's coming around. Thank you. Welcome to our media, Corinne McCarthy for Channel 32 and Renee Sibon for Temple Star. And welcome to Randy and to Don in our gallery. Up there comes Councilor Balfour. Thank you. So we now...
I was just gonna text you. Let's text.
I didn't got it. I was on the phone.
We'll start our meeting with Councilor Bantry.
Our Father in Heaven, as we bow as before Thee as public and councilors to the town of Carson, we are indeed thankful for the positions we hold. May we hold them with integrity. May we be guided and directed in the affairs of this community and the people who we serve. We ask a special blessing to be honest that we will be directed and guided and directed. And the things that we say, we'll say truthfully and openly. And these things we ask for in the name of my Son Jesus Christ.
Thank you very much. All right, we need to adopt the agenda. There is at least one addition and possibly two. One addition has to do with hole F, the village of Hillspring, chaired service proposal. It will have to be in camera because of the nature of the discussion.
Four F is not on here. There's an addition?
You had that.
That's what I'm saying. And Councilor Bantry, do you need to have that added on?
Yes, in camera for land under four G, please.
Okay, under four G.
And we also had an item for this possible takeover of Altale.
Altale, do you want to put it under questions maybe? Would you like to entertain it as questions or do you want to entertain it as an item?
It'd be nice to know what, how it's going to affect us as a town.
Why don't we put it under questions then?
Sure.
Okay. Ten A. Okay, thank you. So we have three additions. We need a motion to approve the amended agenda. Councilor Balfour said...
I want to approve the agenda.
The agenda. Any questions? No, sing none. All in favor? Thank you. Well, it's my pleasure to ask Don to come over here. We have a recognition to do for Don Weston today. Don, it's really my pleasure to be there with you today and to recognize you as a ten-year full-time employee. You will have a beautiful service recognition. But before you disappear, let me tell people what you've done. You worked ten years in the public works. But you also very early in the morning, we all start the morning, like two o'clock in the morning in a sweeper, doing your round around Main Street. And you are the greatest handyman that town has ever had. You built every cover that there is hanging anywhere. Around flatbeds for the...
Do what I have to do.
For the camera or for whatever other project you had in mind. You always have some sorts of ideas. And he was a handyman around the renovation of the office. So thank you so much. Well done. Marion needs to be there and take a picture with you. Don?
No, no, we got the picture with you.
Is that enough? Okay. As you can see, we have quite a few delegations that have been scheduled in camera. They all have to do with land. Therefore, under the MGA, it is a proper place to have those discussions in camera. So in order to carry on, we will go to item five. Until 5:30, we're going to try to see if we can cover as much as the agenda we can. Okay, five has to do with the adoption of the minutes of the regular council meeting of June 24th. We need a motion to approve those minutes. Councilor Bantry is approving the minute. And thank you, Councilor Balfour, for being my chair. Is, are there any questions regarding those minutes? No? Sing none. All in favor? Thank you. We will go with item six. Item six is a very complicated item in some ways. It has to do with the golf course relocation of hole number 16. As you may know, this hole is being really damaged because of the slippage of the hill. So Marion has taken the advice of council to seek information for relocation from Les Ferber's company, the builder of the course. They provided a relocation site. This relocation site has been reviewed by EBA Engineering. Marion went with them on site. And it has been determined that a slope stability assessment needs to be done so that if we relocate the hole as Les Ferber's company suggests, that we don't suffer again in years to come the same problem of slippage. This study comes at a cost, as you know. And the cost is $23,000. The funding would come from the capitalization policy funding that is remaining for 2014. You can call it our capital slash money. Pretty well. So if you are in agreement with this decision that is proposed to us, and I think it's a wise decision, I'd rather spend $23,000 than spend ton more money when there's another slippage. So I need a motion and I would...
Just a quick question.
Sure.
I was looking at this. It said something about that the town may consider reducing the scope of the work and uninstalling the two inclinometers. And this would result in a cost of $11,300. I guess the question is to Marion is, is this something that would affect the results of the tests in a significant way if we didn't do this? Or would it be better to spend the other $11,300 and do that?
Yeah, in my discussions with EBA, the inclinometer is a critical kind of part of this to really understand what movement is taking place. It's placed in a casing down, you know, they drill down and it's placed in that casing. And they can tell just from the movement in that where the actual movement on the hill has happened. So I would suggest that it's wise to move forward with the full proposal. Otherwise, it's just relying on visual inspection and their...
Too much guesswork.
Their expertise. I think that it's better to have the data because what we're seeing there, their analysis of that is that the movement in that hill is fairly deep. And I think we need to know that because it will significantly change where that hole can be placed.
Councilor Bantry?
I'm quite concerned at the town doing this, at the town expense. This has been under private contract for, I don't know how many years. But this started in 2010. That's a prior council to this one. I'm just wondering how much more are we going to do under private contracting? I mean, are we going to get something else come up? And something else come up? And are we going to be, just keep on relieving this situation?
Councilor Bantry, I don't know what you're talking about, private contract, private engineering firm? Is that what you're trying to say?
No, the contractors that have the, that run the golf course now, the management group, they run the golf course now.
Yeah, okay, I understand what you're saying. The problem is that when we listed golf course, we listed with the caveat that we will look after the problem of the slippage on that hole 16.
It specifically listed that?
Yeah, it was. It was because...
How do you know, Councilor? You wasn't on the council at that time.
But because it was written.
You want to know?
Are you the dude?
Council was privy to that contract when it was renegotiated at the last...
And when we renegotiated, we spoke about that very item because that was in the original contract that we as a town would take the responsibility for the physical changes in that land because it's at the end, our property and in our best interest.
And in our current contract, we specifically dealt with dealing with number 16 and the need to move that anyways. That's in the current lease that we did.
Okay, now, the question is, it's coming from me. After hole 16 is done, what comes next?
Okay.
Number eighteen.
That is, number eighteen and number fourteen. You're right.
Yeah.
Okay. Councilor Bantry, you asking a very profound question. How much money can a town invest in keeping the integrity of the golf course? That is a question that sooner or later we have to discuss.
Or a facility. That's right.
But I think let's deal with this item right now. That's a more pressing.
We can't nail what is, and this is before us now.
Councilor Bantry?
Yeah, we're still in the discussion mode. Actually, a couple of items. First, I'd be interested in, I don't know if we have any kind of visual to where the proposed relocation of the course is, or the hole, I mean, of the hole 16?
Yeah. Or description? I do have visuals. I have a blueprint. There's, I believe I have six proposals or eight proposals. So there's numerous locations that they're looking at.
Okay, so there's not one location there's...
It's very similar, but doing the onsite inspection, their initial analysis, the engineer's initial analysis, is that those locations are probably not going to be suitable. So that's why I didn't put it in the package because I believe from their onsite inspection that we're going to have to come up with a further design. But the engineer felt that he had enough information from their proposals to kind of be able to test some specific areas.
So basically, this study will find, is to find a suitable area for hole 16 rather than test to whether the area you've chosen is...
Correct.
Because they haven't really chosen an area yet.
Correct.
So we're still looking for an area for hole 16 to go...
There's a recommended area. But like I said, the onsite inspection, the engineer is not confident that that area is suitable. And so he will give us that information and where a suitable location would be. If I might add to that, one of the other options we have, I guess, is that we continue to try to repair 16. But again, this year, we had a cart path severely damaged in this rainy event. We're talking a drop like this again. And on an angle, there's no way to kind of go around it. We had another cart path that kind of rolled over on itself. We're seeing some additional slippage on the green and part of the fairway on 16. They have sprinkler damage and things like that. So that is an option, I guess, but if we want the course to be fully functioning, 18 holes, the opinion of both the management group, the architect, and previous councils, and this council actually discussed it, was that it needs to be considered to be relocated. I do have some preliminary cost estimates. The hole itself is somewhere in the range of $125,000 to $150,000 to rebuild that hole. But it depends on, you know, if we can have some kind of donation and those kind of things. We feel that maybe there's some people in the community that would be able to assist us and we might be able to do a little bit cheaper on that.
You just answered the other question I was wanting to ask.
Yeah.
On the, you know, because that is the next thing is the, you know, we're just looking at the study and then we've got the construction. And you're saying it's going to be around $100,000 to $125,000?
The quotes, the estimates came in at about $120,000, I believe. I would suggest that we probably want to look at $150,000. I've never seen a quote come in on budget yet for a project like that. There's always, there was no engineering, no drainage. None of that was included in the quote. So, you know, it's going to add costs to that. So we're probably closer to the $150,000 range. But as I said in my background, I think that it's critical that we do some due diligence and we don't just go throwing good money after bad here. If we are considering relocation, I think we need to know what's happening on that hill. And we can't simply just move it to another location because it changes the golf course, right? So it has to work somewhere within the confines of that area. How that's going to work out, I don't know at this point.
Any further discussions? If not, do we have a motion coming forward?
I'm prepared to make that motion.
Okay, would you like to read?
Sure. Whereas there's been significant damage to hole 16 on Lee Creek Valley Golf Course, starting in 2010 and continuing through 2014 as a result of slippage. And whereas the town of Carson owns the golf course and has a responsibility to leasing to provide a fully functioning 18-hole course. And whereas it had been proposed to relocate hole 16. And whereas it is necessary to perform the due diligence prior to undertaking any further construction. Therefore, be it resolved, the town of Carson enter into a contract in the amount of $23,000 plus GSD with EBA Tech-Tech to carry out a slope stability assessment for the potential relocation of hole 16 at Lee Creek Valley Golf Course. And furthermore, that the study be funded through the capitalization policy.
Okay, any other questions? Sing none?
Maybe I'll add a quick question. Or they could, to administration. So the, is the study going to include both options, relocation and, you know, retrofitting if that's viable?
Retrofitting the existing...
Existing, sure, yeah.
What the study will do is give us the information on where the slippage is occurring. So there's different layers in the soil, obviously, and they need to know where that's happening. So I guess potentially, if we saw that it was a fairly shallow slippage, there might be a recommendation that we could do something on the existing hole. I don't anticipate that's going to be the result though, just from the evidence that's currently there. To be quite honest, he feels that the actual fault line in the hill there is basically at the toe of that hill, which is a long ways down. So it could substantially change.
Well, I guess the reason I'm asking is because if we're so confident that's going to be the result, then I'm wondering why we want to do the study?
Well, because I think we need to, there is potential. If we have to go down onto the flat, it's going to change the course substantially. So there may be some alternatives to stay up a little bit. But at this point, you know, if you start going in and moving soil, we want to know, even if we do go down on the flat, how much of that soil can we move without affecting other parts of the course as well, right?
If we end up back on the flat, is that going to save us some money as compared to building another hole up?
It could do. I don't know because they've never drawn that design. So it potentially could, but I can't say that right now.
Somebody asked, say, if you have a good study done, it could also help us understand what's happening in other area on that golf course. Because we have protocols.
We're not hearing you very well, so...
I think if we do the study on hole 16 regarding the soil, we might also understand better what's happening in different area of that course where we have two other holes that are compromised very soon.
I mean, I guess if you want to take the assumption that the slippage is at the toe, that it's that deep, we could do away with the study and just simply get a design and do what was done before and rebuild the hole without any engineering science behind it. But I think if you're going to spend another $150,000, it's probably worth it.
Didn't work out so well for us last time.
It didn't. Yeah, exactly.
Waste money again.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. It's time to maybe vote. All in favor? So against? All right, let's move on. Request for decisions, tree nursery. Councilor Bantry, would you like to speak to it?
Sure, we have to do that. The tree nursery is something that's been thought about before. Thank you for already my proposal. I was actually caretaking the cemetery at one time and they proposed a tree nursery there. And the problem there was that it's not a place where the parks people are on a regular basis. I wasn't opposed to why I was the caretaker, but I wasn't really consulted particularly. They just said, "We're going to put them here." And so I wasn't really invested in it. But the need is there for, so that we can start our own trees. Otherwise, we spend a lot of money. When we want to put in trees, we have to buy them from places. There are areas that could be enhanced by starting a tree nursery in town. And also, there's been a proposal that we maybe do an orchard. So I'm kind of putting those together. You've got some pictures of some areas that Jeff and I discussed at one time. One is up by West Creek Drive. There's a flat. I took a picture there. Down near the reunion center on either side, either the south side or the north side along the creek could be possible areas for a tree nursery. They need to be areas where the parks people are on a regular basis so that they can keep an eye on it, so that they can know when the trees are doing well and know when they're ready to be moved and things like that. And I took a picture also up by the sewage treatment plant. It's a very large lawn there. It'd be good for a nursery or an orchard. Actually, that's what I thought would be nice to put. Some cherry trees. I put some pictures in there of the cherry orchard. Those apples cherries do really well in the climate. But what I would like council to do right now, because we are having our communities in bloom judging and in the last time that they were here, it was written in the report, the town is thinking about this. I'd really hate to tell them three years later that the town is still thinking about this. But I would like us to designate an area where we can start. Or at least, you know, if you don't want to settle on a particular spot, at least designate an area to be determined by parks staff so that we can be moving ahead in this area. This is what I'd like to see is so that we can report. We are moving ahead with beautifying our town by increasing the trees. There's lots of places where we need trees in town. Along the creek, in the lion's park, along some of these slopes that need some stability. Trees would do a long ways towards improving the stability of some of those hills. So if we could start our own trees and then move them to where they're needed, it would be a great thing for our community.
Councilor Bantry?
A question on some of these locations. And I was, in my thoughts, there's a couple of the spots I think are good. How would we deal with the watering issue? Can we draw water out of the river?
Well, what, some of these areas...
If we did it down by the reunion center or by the camp ground there.
When Jeff and I were discussing it, that was one of the issues, is that there has to be water. So down by the reunion center, we have a community irrigation line. So that is in place. Up by West Creek Drive, that was mentioned because there were houses moved from there because of hill slippage. So there are still utility connections, you know, in that area that could be opened up.
But then you're going to use treated water then?
You'd be using treated water, so...
It'd be better if we didn't have treated water.
So maybe down, you know, near the creek where we have the irrigation line might be a better site. Just some thoughts.
Can we put, sorry, Councilor Bantry?
We want to remember, Bill, that one of the reasons why we had those houses moved off that West Creek Drive was because of the watering of the lawns and the saturation of that soil. So if you plant trees there, you're still going to saturate that soil. You're going to be moving on that.
Not the same as you would with houses and watering and then maybe you got tree roots.
You're going to saturate that ground. It's going to sink in. It's going to go somewhere.
Yeah, well, tree roots uphold the soil.
Question, Mayor. A few years back, if I recall, and I'm not that old anymore, didn't we have one of our town foremen have an area that he grew trees specifically for the town?
I would not know.
He had done it pseudo.
It wasn't for the town, I don't believe. Not in my time anyway, that I recall. But he may have. I just don't know for sure.
I have maybe some question for you, Councilor. My question, two different type of question. The first question that I have for you is, we decided years ago that maybe it was a good idea to have a nursery. But has any study been done, analysis been done as to the benefit of it on a long term? Because when you start a nursery, you need so many years before you can really harvest that tree to replant it. So there is the amount of manpower to look after those settlements. Then you have the maintenance that comes with manpower. And later on, you have further maintenance required to look after those trees. So I'm trying to understand, are we really having a benefit if we start a nursery now? And how long will it be before we can reduce our costs? See, that...
Excellent question.
That is from an economic point of view. That is a first question that I have. But the other question that I have for you is regarding the planting of fruit trees. That is maybe something that can be started before the nursery. Because the reunion center would be a wonderful place where you could put fruit trees around that area because there is water. But it also comes at maintenance cost. So how are we going to handle all that?
Okay, so, yeah, it would have to be worked into the budget. And my proposal is that we designate it and then we would have to determine the budget in the coming years. And I don't know. I haven't gone into details, you know, what, an analysis. But I think in principle, I think... But I think in principle, I think...
I think the idea of the fruit trees, bush tree, whatever, around the reunion center, could be put in place before the concept of the nursery. I think that could be a starting point.
All of the fruit trees could be moved at some point to a, you know, if we could find a great place where...
There wouldn't be even a bad place to have them there. You have the water, you have all that, you have maybe some ways to do it.
Mayor, I fully support what your questions on the maintenance and the cost. Because, one of these years, if you have a tree nursery, then somebody's gonna come back to the council and say, "Hey, we need a tree moving unit." And they're not cheap. And of course, you're gonna have to either buy one or subcontract that out to a tree mover. So, you know...
I think as much as the idea is appealing, we have to be careful that it makes economic sense for us. Is it cheaper in the end to buy a tree when we need to replace it? I cannot tell until we have some sorts of basic analysis done, maybe by our interns or someone. Councilor?
Well, at present time, you can buy a two-foot bush spruce tree, healthy.
Guaranteed.
Yes, that's what I mean.
How much? Twenty bucks.
Guaranteed, pretty cheap, guaranteed growth.
So that is...
You might acknowledge you might have a lot of trees.
That is a little bit of, the thing, although the principle is good, we still need to have a sense of the economics good along with the principle.
Maybe we need just a direction to do a study on this. I mean, I don't think we should abandon the idea, but could we, could we take this back and, you know, do a little research on what it would cost to, you know, to do a tree area? One of the things that Jeff and I discussed, maybe it's not so much a nursery, maybe it's actually just getting some established on some of these hillside, but even taking grass or succors from some of the existing trees in town in our community that are already there and establishing them in some of these areas where trees would be useful is like to prevent hill slippage and things like that.
I need to have better information regarding how you stabilize a hill. Are trees a way to do it? I do not know.
Once a year, the county supplies trees to their county residences in bushes and so forth. And I'm not saying that we could, but could we not get a hold of the department that they work with and find out if they would supply us with trees for our community?
I think we could get them, I think there's, Jeff mentioned, Jeff, would you help me? Trees Canada?
Tree Canada.
Tree Canada supplies trees for people.
Yeah.
So that we could, yeah, so I think that would be great.
So you need a viable area, is what you're saying, to raise these trees?
Just a viable area, you know, I'm thinking a lot of that hill down below West Creek Drive where we have the walking trail. Because that trail, since the inception of building that trail, has continually been sliding. And we're always, you know, having to reform that.
I still like your idea of the unused area down at the reunion center. South, down the south end.
Well, that would be very...
I think administration would like to add something.
Perhaps what we could do is, we could put a proposal together as part of the budget process to identify locations, identify cost, and identify, you know, some alternatives, right? Because maybe on the hill, it's not trees, maybe it's bushes.
Right.
You know, there's a number of things, but we could do that as part of the budget process in 4/2015, so council could then make the decision. I think there's some suitable locations that have been recommended here, for sure.
Okay, so we would, Councilor?
Finish your thought and then I'll ask a question.
No, I just would say that if that's a direction that council wants to go with this idea, we will need to have a recommendation to administration to include this tree planting as part of the budget.
The one question I have on the reunion center, the south side there, right now, aren't they currently using that as a disc golf course down there? There are some of the, some of the area down there is being used for to get the...
It's there, but I would suggest it's probably not being used.
Yeah, some of those things have been damaged and I see, very, very little use each.
I know when my son-in-law, my son-in-law and my son come, they go there every time they come down.
Oh, but they can still use it, we'll just have some more hazards.
Well, that's fine, I'll have them not taken out, I think that'd be, that would be good.
Councilor Ebo?
Yeah, I'm wondering if we go back, say, 10 years and just kind of look at what we've spent as a municipality on trees. And then if there's a specific type of tree leaves seem to be buying a lot, we could recommend that for the nursery and then say, "Hey, you know, let's grow our own trees." I don't know what might be savings, but it certainly would be, it would go a long way for self-sufficiency.
Okay. All right, so we need a recommendation. Would you like to make a recommendation?
I would, and I would like to actually, if I can borrow the administration's recommendation, that we include in our budget process for the coming year to study the feasibility of putting in bushes or trees in various areas of the town so that we actually have a program for planting trees and replacing trees. That's the overall object, is to increase our urban forest, to stabilize the hillside. But we have to look at it seriously. So my recommendation, motion is to, whereas we need trees, more trees in our community in the parks and along the creek shore, that therefore, we direct administration to study feasibility of and the cost of putting in trees and bushes into needed areas.
Thank you. Do you want a formal motion for that?
He just made.
So that's a formal motion. Did you get it?
Missed the last part.
Okay.
There are more trees in our community, and you must think of the places which I missed. Therefore, we direct administration to study the feasibilities and costs associated with...
With the planting and...
With creation?
Creation of trees, of putting trees in needed areas.
Tree program.
Of a tree, a tree...
Tree program.
Tree replacement program.
Okay.
Just one quick question.
Questions?
Would this program include boulder trees? Because there are citizens that are wanting trees for the boulders. Would this become part of this program?
It could. We already have the boulder park program. But if we had trees, the trees we have established that we could use, I suppose, that could be, they could be available if they were, if they met the criteria for the boulder park trees. Right now, there's a certain criteria, right, for which trees can be planted.
Councilor Ebo?
I have a question about this motion. Does this motion fill the needs of the communities in Bloom for the upcoming inspection? Or are you still looking for a little area where you can start a little something to win the brownie points we need?
It wouldn't be exactly what I wanted, but something is better than nothing.
But I think it shows that we are moving forward with this thing.
As I said, the best time to plant a tree is 10 years ago. Let's take a best of snaps.
Okay, so we have a motion and we need to vote. All in favor? Thank you very much, Councilor, for your work in this area. All right, we need to carry on. And we now need to talk about taxation and issues with taxation.
Number?
Different.
Seven B.
For two residents. Seven B and seven C. Seven B is a citizen of our town that came and paid his taxes July the 8th. And the rule is, and the policy is, that if you pay your taxes after June 30th or the following day that is an open day at the office, you will pay a penalty. The notices are sent by, at the post office, through the post office. And this particular gentleman came and paid his taxes after receiving the notification that his taxes were late. Now, his argument is that he did not receive the first bill. That is a difficulty we cannot prove. However, we know that the MGA says that once a tax assessment or tax bill is sent, it is deemed to have been received by the particular taxpayer within seven days. That's all what we can...
Mayor, this gentleman's probably been paying taxes for the last 60 years. He knows tax when taxes are due. He addressed the situation that his address was correct. As far as this council is concerned, he pays the penalty.
Okay. Any other discussion regarding that? Councilor Ebo?
Do we know how many years he's been paying taxes on this particular property?
He just bought that property.
This is a new one.
This is brand new property.
But he's been paying taxes.
Two, three months ago, didn't he?
I don't know the exact date, but this is his first year paying taxes on this property.
Right. But, yeah, Councilor Ebo is correctly, has been a taxpayer for a long time. All right, so if there is no motion coming forward, there is no decision made?
I would like the motion to either send a letter or something.
All right, so motion to send a letter regarding our decision, so.
Okay, just before we move on here.
Councilor Bunn?
Where does the benefit of doubt come in here as well? Like you said, he's been paying taxes for a long time, I appreciate that. But I don't think the fellows would come in here blatantly and say, "Hey, I didn't receive it" when he knows he didn't, or if he did receive it. Where do we come up with the benefit of the doubt here for this individual?
Well, I kind of look at, I got a phone call from my dad this last week. She's not a resident of our town, but owns property here. And he didn't pay his taxes on time. He got the late notice, the same as this gentleman. And my comment to him was, "Dad, you've been paying taxes on properties for 70 years."
Yeah.
You know they're due on June 30th.
Okay, so we need a motion to move this. Councilor Ebo?
I'll make a motion that the penalties be applied to this particular property as suggested in the, in the statement.
Can I just, a friendly...
Question?
Is, maybe you want to say instead, penalties be applied, maybe say, "No exception be granted." It's a little, maybe more accurate to attempt.
Yeah, okay. So do you accept the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So do you want to reword it, the word? Do you have it, Brian? Okay, maybe not. So Councilor Ebo, go ahead, start again.
If the taxes on this, the penalties on this particular property, be it what it is, the address, I don't think we need to state that, be, the penalty be applied that are justified in the application is because taxes are paid, due and payable on June 30th.
Okay, thank you. Question?
No, actually, I might do add a friendly amendment to Councilor Ebo's motion, if possible, that in the letter, that we should recommend that if he would enroll in the TIP program, that he could avoid having any possible penalties in the future.
Good point, good point. Accepted?
You bet.
Okay, all right.
Can I just read that back?
Please.
Try it.
By Councilor Ebo, that a letter be sent to Mr. Guy?
Bobby.
Bobby explaining that the tax penalty will not... I'm trying to read that out, just, for the property at, like, will be waived? Oh, sorry, will not be waived, and I see you need to encourage to enroll in the TIP program.
Okay, all right, then. All in favor? Yeah, that was, yeah, true. Okay, we have another issue, it's a little bit more complex. Because in that case, taxes will not be fully paid for quite a few months. I believe the earliest they will be fully paid will be March 2015. Here, the issue is that there is, there are multiple levels of penalties that will be incurred. The first penalty is now, the next penalty is in September. The next penalty will come in January, December, and then, let me see. September and January, yeah. So, there has been a precedent set last year regarding a similar situation, where the first penalty stood because taxes are due on the 30th. But because a particular taxpayer has made arrangement to pay on a monthly basis, there is an opportunity for council to say that we will only waive the September and the January penalty providing the taxpayer pays their monthly payment. That is what we can do. But the June penalty stands, the July penalty stands. I think that would be fair because taxes are due, but we can make some kind of provision in the future as was done in a former case. It's up to council to decide that one.
I think, given our previous vote that we just took, that we definitely can't do anything about the June. I'm sympathetic to Mrs. Roberts' health issues. And given that we do have a precedent previously for doing that, I think I'd be in favor of doing something about the future penalties as long as the, as long as the repayments are made.
Would you want to put a motion forward?
Given, whereas the council in the past has agreed to waive the 12% penalties assessed in January and September in the past, that we enter into an agreement that as long as the payments are continued and consistent, that the agreed-upon payments are made, that we not charge those, we waive those penalties.
And encourage the TIP program?
And definitely encourage the TIP program.
Yeah, you said January, September should be in the right order, September and January.
Sorry.
Yeah. September 2014, January 2015, to be precise. Okay, any questions?
Just clarification, so what we're looking at is that those would stay on unless all payments are made and then they would come off at the end, is that?
No. The way it is, the first penalty, July penalty sticks. After that, that particular taxpayer has decided to make a monthly payment. If that monthly payment is continuous right up to September, September penalty will be waived. If it carries on to January, that penalty will be waived.
So it's a form of TIP, really, what she's doing?
It's a form of...
Man, just for clarification, how the agreement would read was if default happens on any of those payments, we would go back and reapply those charges.
So if she's involved in November, she's still gonna get the September penalty?
Yeah, yeah.
So it's an incentive for payment, that's the agreement?
I just would like to just suggest that this is a fairly standard practice with any financial transaction. If a bank or a landlord or any things happen and a person has some financial hardships, if they come in and make arrangements, typically, the institution will be willing to work a deal. And I think we're doing the same thing here.
All in favor? Thank you. All right, so this is... All right, so this is good, we're doing fine here. Let's move on to Main Street Crosswalk. Councilor Barfus, would you like to talk to us?
Sure. I'm still not exactly sure how I got dragged into this one, but okay.
Oh, you don't want me to explain to you?
So there was a member of our citizenship that actually made a comment to our MLA about some of the dangers that he saw in crosswalks in our area. And our MLA had since carried on from there and actually had suggested to put together a proposal to the province to have some lights put on in the crosswalks at the province's expense and make that application. I think it's Transport.
Yeah, Ministry of Transportation.
And so basically, he's looking for a letter of support from us to go ahead and to do that.
Okay. So my concern is not so much with the idea of a crosswalk light, rather that citizens do not respect the crosswalks and jaywalk. So no matter how many lights and how much signal we will have there, I don't think it will change the poor habits of our citizens. And if they're not in a crosswalk, they're twice as much in danger than if they're in a crosswalk. But what I really feel personally, if you don't mind me saying, I think there may be some things that should be done in town. For example, in some town, you see painting on the pavement, it will only work in the summer, of course, when we have no snow, but something to say, crosswalk ahead or something of that sort, to let them know that be careful, watch what's going on on both sides. I don't know that an extra light would help the matter. It might.
It's more visible.
It might. Councilor Barfus?
When I read this, I had to applaud the situation, because I feel strongly about the crosswalks.
Safety is an issue.
Safety is a big issue. If we save one accident, one person getting hurt, then we've solved a big problem. Look at liability and everything, too. I have watched that, because I've gone to Main Street for a long time. I've watched the crosswalk at the TD Bank. And yeah, I see a few people going across the streets and jaywalking, but I've seen a lot of people that use that crosswalk very timidly, because I've seen lots of cars go through there without slowing down. And every time I've seen that, I think, where are the authorities when this happens? Because it is a steep line, it's a serious issue. I think lights would help.
We also can have more presence of enforcement people in our town looking at that issue, too, you know?
That's exactly what I was going to say. I wholeheartedly stand for the crosswalk lighting. It's no cost to the town, it's a safety feature, it's visible. But at the same token, we need to have the presence of our bylaw officer and whoever down on that street saying to these people and to these kids, get your butts down to the crosswalk. You know, that's what they're there for.
My greatest concern is the issue of lack of usage of that thing.
That's right.
But we can...okay, maybe we could go around the table and quickly put it to rest. Councilwoman Edmonds, do you want a letter regarding lighting on those crosswalks?
My concern is the one at the top of the hill doesn't work. We're going to add another one halfway through, then we've got a traffic light, then we've got another warning light. If you're driving a big truck, you're going to be pretty frustrated by the time you get through town.
Send the big trucks on the bypass.
Big trucks are supposed to be in the... But most of them can't make the turn.
Yeah, and that's unfortunately something that we need...
What do we have with the milk truck?
It got stuck.
Tried to make the turn.
Tried to cut the corner.
Flipped over on its side.
Slow down a little bit.
Okay. Councilor Barfus, what's your opinion?
My thoughts are, actually, that I think we should probably go ahead with it, that in relation to those concerns, if there's people in the crosswalks, which is the only time those lights are being used, that truck's got to stop anyways.
According to, a while back, we asked the RCMP about that, and they said you don't have to stop until somebody in the crosswalk. If they're just walking off the other end...
Oh, you don't have to wait till they totally cross.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
The lights don't change that.
No, no.
The lights are just a notification that there's somebody there to give a better notice of.
So, yeah, I just want to understand, first of all, when we're talking about lights, you're just talking about a warning light, we're not talking about something you push about and it'll turn red while you're crossing, or it's not turn red, it's just a yellow light.
It's just a yellow light, it's a warning.
Look at the IGA.
It's a warning light.
So it doesn't really stop traffic, it just goes, it's just another alert to alert them that there is a crosswalk there, somebody's crossing. It can't hurt.
I wholeheartedly go for this. And I use the crosswalk a lot up at the top of the hill, and I push that button, and it works. Every time I use it, it works. I don't know if you just drove by there, just see people walking, and they haven't pushed the button, but I, I push that button when I go. And that works. So I'd like to see it as a safety thing, is my concern. And it's not causing us anything.
I agree with Councilman Baverly. If it's just kind of a notification light, then I'm all for it. If it's one of these things where you have to stop and wait, and the guy crossed two minutes ago, and you're still waiting, I would oppose that, so.
Councilman Baverly?
I'm with the lights, but also more enforcement of jaywalking.
Okay, all right. So we need a motion to...our support for a letter to be written regarding this particular item to the Ministry of Transportation.
Apparently, I'm missing that one.
Go ahead, have fun.
I'll move that we write a letter in support of our MLA's letter to Transportation Ministry of Transport in support of putting crosswalk lights at those two crosswalks.
I want it warningly, so it's...
So, Councilwoman Edmonds?
Warning lights.
Can we also include in that letter? We asked four years ago...
The timing?
To get the light at Third Avenue and Main Street to go on blink after eleven, like the one in the past. We've never had any response. Can we also put that in the same motion?
I do not...
I think our letter is just supporting what the MLA's letter...
Yeah.
Maybe we want to...
That could be a separate letter. I think we should write to the MLA, or write to our MLA, since he's approaching that.
That's right. It could be a separate letter for us. I think it needs to be a separate letter.
And this person is going to give us a little bit of support, yeah?
Yeah, maybe we could just give a little bit of update on that request. We have had that conversation, that request is going to...they are not in favor of that. So I don't...if you want us to pursue it again with this council, we will be allowed to do that, to get the flashing light, but they're pretty strong in their position.
So do they think there's a difference between the one at the top of the hill and the one at the bottom of the hill?
Where? The old adage, squeaky wheel always gets greased. Let's just pursue that situation.
Jeff can speak to it.
Jeff?
What they did, and you've noticed, they put the timer, so...
Which is better.
The concerns from, well, it was actually two councils ago, was that it was such a long delay, it was three and four and five minutes. It's only ever been a minute type, we'll continue to maintain that, because I timed it a number of times. But now they actually have the timer on it to count it down, so they've shortened the time that it's read on Main Street. And they've tried to keep it moving along a little quicker, but that's how they would prefer it on the highway.
All right. So we have a motion on the table to put two warning lights at the crosswalks.
Send it back to the...I support that.
Yeah, this is a support letter. Okay? Please.
Would by Councilor Barfus that a letter is supportive installation to control the crosswalks on Main Street be sent to the Minister of Transportation?
We will have to identify where those two are.
Is this a...
That has to be...
Does it need to go directly to the Minister of Transportation, or is it a service?
I would send a letter of support to the MLA.
Letter.
I believe it should go from council to the minister and CC.
To the MLA.
Yeah, that's a bad... So it shows it's two letters going, it's not just simply support.
Right.
Okay. All in favor? Okay. Thank you. You still have a better time, you're doing good. Seventy outdoor fitness equipment. As you know, we had Mrs. Bev, I think her name is, who came and did a presentation to council regarding outdoor equipment. Tara put a request for decision from together in our packet, and really, she has in the required action pretty well the wording of a proposal. So what we would need to have here, if you are in favor of such, is a motion to support the proposal as given in our packet. So, Councilwoman Baverly?
So just a question, it says donation in kind for the cost of labor, which realistically would be an actual expense of fifty thousand roughly to get these in, is that...
I do not know that.
Well, no, that was...
The...
This is our mark.
The amount of dollar is not there.
That's the cost of everything.
If I could address that.
Okay, Councilor Barfus?
I was at the meeting. The people who sell the equipment have a ten thousand dollar installation packet included in there. They said, if you don't want us to do it, we'll give you all the information necessary for you to do it, and you will have a savings of that ten thousand dollars. So, and it could be put up by volunteers with help from the town and stuff like that. So it would be considered a saving, it wouldn't cost fifty thousand dollars, less than ten thousand.
Thank you. Councilwoman Baverly?
My other question was the feasibility study, is that something drawn out, twenty thousand dollar feasibility study, or were they...
I think it would be an in-town feasibility study regarding the proper location for it. It's...there are different sites that have been already designated, more or less, looked at, and I think they will look at a report and come for a better location. Mayan, can you fill us in a little bit?
Yeah, that would just be done internally, to determine if it's a suitable location, is really what it should have said in the motion.
Biggest expense was cutting into Jeff's lunch hour.
That's right. When we...there were several kind of proposals of where to put this, and as we talked about it, there were some pretty convenient places to put it, like in behind the ball-diamond structures, and people can walk around it. A lot of people are walking around Town Square, and there's a lot of locations in behind the ball diamonds that would be very unobtrusive and be easy for access, and it wouldn't disturb any ongoing things. I thought that was a great idea.
It is. Are you ready to put a motion forward?
Sure.
Okay, got that. Motion to support the proposal?
Yeah. I make motion that, whereas the Parks and Recreation Department has discussed the situation as it's in your pack here, and been moved by Dr. Call to recommend council to support the proposal, John Janbaff. My motion is that we do follow up and to support the Parks and Recreation Department in following up with the three items there, the required action, and to move forward to see if we can go forward with this. And in the event that we come up with this and support it, that we can let Mrs. Bev know, and then their group can make the necessary application to get the grant, something worth fifty thousand dollars.
I think essentially, the motion that you want is also to support the proposal as given in a packet in succession.
Goodness gracious.
Thank you.
Obviously.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you. All right. The next item is...you're welcome. The next item is a little bit more complicated. It's a skateboard park. As you know, the pool requires more land than previously when we had the original pool. When we had the slide for the kiddie pool, I mean, the next, all the slides, equipment, it will require a certain portion of that skateboard in order to put and install those infrastructure. So here are different issues that we have to deal with. Number one, this park was created for the benefit of the youth of our town. It had its good days, and it has now had some difficult time with attracting maybe youths that really don't have the same concept of what a recreation park is, which means that we have more graffiti coming on the building, on those blocks, and as was seen also on the pool. So if we move that park in town, it has to be highly visible. Lethbridge built one on the front of the stadium, it's highly visible from the, from Mayor McGrath. You can see it very open. So we need, if we relocate it in town, it has to be highly visible. So there is one area where it's possible to do is where the old information hut was by the creek.
That's quite new.
Across from the provincial building. That is visible, there would be no fences around, no. The only trouble is that if we have this idea to put it there, how do you stop the traffic of skateboard on the sidewalks going to that park? That's a good question.
If we take that, if we take that area and use it for a skateboard park, countless, countless times I've drove down this Main Street, and that's being used by tourists that are coming through, they stop there, they've got a little picnic set up in that area on that table, and they're using that area, and I don't think that's an ideal area. I go past a skateboard park in Lethbridge probably three times a day, and that is being used simply because it is a skateboard park. It's not wooden ramps or anything else, it's cement ramps and steel rails, and those kids love it. I sat there and watched them, and for hours and hours, they'll, they skateboard. I had a kid that used to skateboard, and I'm sure everybody had a kid that skateboarded, and they skateboard on cement, not on plywood. And if we're going to relocate this skateboard park, maybe we better be thinking about upgrading the skateboard park in the, in the location where we want it. And I'm suggesting maybe the Town Square where the old, by the tennis courts there, where the old horseshoe pits used to be.
That was another spot we were talking about, with the...
Yeah. South of the tennis courts, or west of the tennis courts.
It has to be very visible, even at night. You have to have some visibility, because that is where we have had our troubles. And the police had been there numerous times, because there had been trouble there numerous times. So it has to be highly visible.
One of the things I've thought of since the agenda was put together, I'm wondering if this is something that could be tabled to be addressed in our Recreation Master Plan that we're currently working on.
Good plan.
Because we're talking about different locations, and what type of park and all of that.
And what...
If we just take simply at this point, and I know it's not ideal, but it may have to be taken down for a short period of time till that Recreation Master Plan is completed.
Okay, I think it's a good, good point, thank you.
Then I'm prepared to make that recommendation, and we send this back to the Recreation Department, for them to... We send this back to the Recreation Department for them to.
Parks and Recreation.
Parks and Recreation, for them to determine the location, uh, upgrades that need to be and so forth, and then present that back to council.
Thank you. In the master plan or?
Yes, in the master plan.
Can we add that to the motion please?
Yes.
Okay, hold on, there is a question, yeah.
Yeah, I think also add to the, the motion that, that we are, you know, in favor of moving, that we don't want it where it is now, that we, that it used to be either moved.
It can't be there.
It's gotta be moved.
But it can't be there by necessity of the land that we need for the.
The water supply too.
Okay. Councilor Pivoy?
Question, what is our timeframe on that master plan? Do we know roughly when we were hoping to have that done, by Christmas?
Well, they, they worked on it a bit this winter and they'll work on again in 2014, 15. So I'm hoping by next. In early summer, we should have a draft.
Okay.
Okay, prepared. All in favor?
Sort of.
Thank you. We'll have.
Madam Mayor. If I could just clarify something, you may recall in the strategic plan, we identified like three areas this year, three next year, three the following year. So this year was ice rink, swimming pool, I can't remember the third one. So it's planned over three years. I'm just wondering if, you know, if there's just a temporary place we can set it all until it gets dealt with next year.
Just, um, my recommendation is that if we're going to, uh, set it up again, that it needs to go in the same location it currently is. Otherwise, we'll need to go through a bit of a public process to determine if the other potential location would be suitable and whether the citizens in the area would support that. So, uh, if it was reestablished in the same location it's in, you know, it could potentially happen. There is some space there, we didn't take a lot of the tennis court. Um, I think the major concern from the Parks and Recreation Committee was the vandalism and graffiti that we're seeing because of, because of the location.
Yeah, and the location is, is really important. If there's no visibility with a skateboard plan, it's true, there is difficulty for us.
We've got a, we've got a light that's on the pool all night long, every, every night. What would it cost to run a wire right around the corner?
We have, we have streetlights over top of that and we were asked to shut them off about three years ago.
Yeah, ten o'clock to have them shut down because after, when we had the lights on, it attracted.
Yeah, what, what was happening?
The pool light itself, the one that's on the wall inside?
No, no, we have streetlights on a skateboard.
Yeah, but I'm saying attach, attach another light right on the, on the side of the pool, shining right on that skateboard park.
But what, what the police were finding is if the skateboard park was lit, then that would attract more people and they were there all hours of the night and it was causing more problems than when it was on.
Can I make something, suggest something? I'd rather have those kids down on that skateboard park than, than crowding the town.
We do have a camera on the pool, um, that records anything that we can catch, but, you know, you can't cover everything all the time. But the lights were shut off at the request of the RCMP listeners.
Yeah, I remember that very well.
Wasn't that in support of the bylaw?
After Kirkeby bylaw.
There's a Kirkeby.
Yeah. Okay.
They don't want to that either.
All right. So we now need to go to the financial report. You have in your packet, uh, May 2014 report, so you will still see some stuff that you will question because, uh, the adjustment will not be made until the next, the next quarter. For example, the golf course. Okay? So if you are accepting that financial report, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the financial report.
Okay, Councilor Edmonds has made a motion, any questions? Councilor, please.
I just have a question, I, about the, on the taxes receivable, um, I'm trying to figure out how, how that is reported. Uh, that seems like most of the budget for taxes, we receive some on the tip program, you know, throughout the year, so how, how, how do they record the?
That would be done by way of journal entry at the time that the taxes are less paid.
So is this, is this the total, the total tax receivable budget? Or is it a portion?
The net municipal tax, is that the line you're talking about?
Tax, well, under taxes receivable, under assets.
Oh, I see, I see your story, no.
If you want to see, if you want to see the, the right amount of tax, that you're practical to, to the income statement.
Okay, okay, so this is.
And the revenue gives you what.
Okay, so this is about two thirds.
The tax you see was what was, what was invoiced.
Okay, so this, this represents about two thirds of the total tax, um, revenue, the, the receivable part.
No, um, it's, it's the amount that we levy, two point two.
Yeah, two point two, two point two.
That's the total tax.
Oh, that, yeah.
I'm just trying to understand because haven't we, didn't we, don't we receive some throughout the year with the tip program?
Right, but that goes into a year-end receivable account that we then transfer out by way of journal entry.
Okay, so this is the total amount, okay.
As of May 31st, 2014. Okay?
Hold on a second here, this is the amount yet to come in?
That's what we in, that's what we invoiced.
Totally.
Yeah.
Even though, even though some of that's been received.
Correct.
Already through the tip program.
Correct.
All right. So, do we have a motion?
Councilor, a motion, a motion.
We need to vote on it. All in favor? Thank you. All right, so if we go, we might have ten minutes to recover item nine. Committee and other report, uh, the town council motion list is there for you to review. Any question regarding that list of motion? Councilor Pivoy?
Yeah, just remind me what the Denise Norton letter was about.
Oh, that, that, uh, letter was representing, uh, a need for, to give support to, uh, early education studies that have been done and how it might affect our policies in town. But I found that quite a few of our students that are under kindergarten that are not at par with the skills they should have acquired by the time they enter kindergarten. And they want to know if we have policies that are made that would affect that, they want us to keep that in mind.
And I know it doesn't, uh, it's not noted in there, but the letter has been given to them.
Yes.
So it just was next time.
Uh, the follow-up, Miss, Mrs. Norton is the head, or the chair of that committee, early childhood, and would like to meet with me and I will contact her and try to see what she has to, um, compile for evidence. Uh, the weather letter is written from my point of view, as a former educator, it's too vague. When you give the result of a study, you, uh, you, you divide it by category of kids, try to understand where the difficulty is. You do it with social, social economics, try to understand the overall implication. To make a blanket statement doesn't help me very much. Okay?
Quick question on, on here, for the staff barbecue tomorrow, what time do you want us there? It's real quick.
Good question. Come quarter to six.
Is that fifteen minutes gonna be enough for us to cook those steaks?
We'll have, well, we won't have them all cooked. We anticipate we need around six thirty, so that'll give you time to.
So for your quarter to six, that's plenty of time.
And we will have everything else down there prepared for you.
At the reunion center. Councilor Edmonds?
I'd like to ask Councilor Barnes, he sits on the library committee. Uh, have you heard anything back on the increased funding?
Not yet. We don't have a meeting until September, so we haven't been notified of that. I'm anticipating that that's going to come in the fall.
Okay. Okay. So we have some, uh, council committee reports, thank you, Councilor. For all those who brought forward their report and, uh, Councilor Pivoy gave you his today as an addition. Um, any questions?
Just as a point of interest, they will be starting work on the courthouse building, starting either Friday or Monday of this week.
I saw them painting the windowsills.
Well, that's separate, this will be on the sandstorm.
Okay.
Restoration.
So, did you manage to find grant money to do the work?
Not yet, but we're going ahead and work.
That's good.
All righty then. What was the, what was the, uh, cost for, to do that work?
Maybe we don't want to know, there's no money yet.
We're doing sixty thousand dollars.
Sixty thousand dollars, okay.
Of which we're applying for a grant in September, thirty thousand dollars.
But you've got two hundred thousand dollars right now in the account, right, that you could use.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. We have a CAO report. Uh, any question of Marian regarding that report? There is some, uh, important information regarding the golf course and then regarding different elements of policies. You have attached to that report, the Public Works Water and Wastewater capital projects that are doing on Fourth Avenue West, the sewer line and the water line. And you have a peace officer report along with his foot patrol. And, uh, there is also afterwards, um, the town of Carson Development Report, which is on the 9E. And 9D is, uh, the Carson Pool Grand Opening, uh, Saturday, August the 2nd, from eleven AM to two PM. I hope that don't roast me or throw me in the water that day.
I think that's a pretty safe bet, better where you're with.
That's, that's, Councilor Barnes, I don't trust you.
Belly flop competition.
Belly flop, wow, I could fit the bill.
I would anticipate right around eleven o'clock, there'll be a bit of a ribbon cutting ceremony. There's another game.
So we need to be there for that.
So, uh, yeah, we would appreciate having as many councilors and their families there as possible.
Is that, are we going to be doing the?
Dressed appropriately.
Hot dogs and burger thingy that?
Chambers.
Chambers got that.
The chambers doing everything, so having another control.
Did we talk to the Rotary about their little, uh, driving fundraisers? I know they wanted to try to re-initiate that.
I wondered if that was a good.
Sort of, sort of. I'll visit with you about that. Okay. Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't, it's not in the Rotarians' court right now.
Okay.
I'll, I'll talk to you about that, all right.
Okay.
Do we need to help to cook all this stuff or what? Have you got your people already?
I, we could always use some helpers. We might just do an apron rotation, so twenty minutes or whatever, if you're there.
By the way, we, we have ordered aprons for all of council. We will have them tomorrow night for your inaugural barbecue cooking contest.
Yes.
I, I, I have a question, I've just been on my mind all day. Can I bring my barbecue spices?
No.
Good. You can't.
You win.
I win?
All right. Okay, we, we have five more minutes, so let's try to use that wisely. Questions, uh, on the ten? Altolink, Councilor Edmonds, you brought that forward, would you like to address your question?
What was that?
On the ten, question, you have it.
And what we're gonna throw in the development option report?
Yeah, we, we talked about it.
No, he's here for the in-camera council.
Okay, all right.
There was a piece in the newspaper last week saying that, uh, somebody was trying to buy Altolink.
Yes, there was.
My concern was, what is that gonna do to us?
Yeah, and, uh, in fact, in that newspaper release, there was, uh, an invitation for the public to write to the Minister of Energy regarding the possible negative impact it might have on our province. So I don't know sufficiently about the deal, but maybe administration could find out through our consultant?
My concern is Altolink is proposing this Morris House big power line, which is overkill. And now we're beginning to see that this is possibly shipping power out of Alberta. That, that is the whole thing behind it. And this American company is a large conglomerate with lots of arms.
Yeah, what we need to understand is how beneficial it could be for our province if there's movement of electricity, no source. Which way is it going and who is going to benefit from it, we need to know.
I want to know, is it gonna affect our utility bills and what we're buying?
The sale itself isn't going to, but the construction of all.
Yeah. But that's already something, we already.
Being a writer on that one.
Yeah, yeah, we already pay.
But I think it will find that your rates will go up to cover the costs.
Oh, that, that's happening regardless of the city, that's happening.
Okay, so, uh, could we have, uh, could we have our consultant give us a little bit of an update and what if, what if used as, uh, being the possible impact on our town as distributor of energy? Thank you.
Should we, Madam Mayor, should we consider asking other communities in our area to, uh, ladder of support?
Can I, can I give you an?
After that proposal comes.
Can I give you an idea of what I, I will do when, at the next mayor's envoi? I will bring that question forward because we represent quite a large, uh, amount of municipalities and I will see if there is, uh, interest in, uh, formulating something to the Ministry of Energy. Okay, I will report next time.
We want to remember that we are one of three communities with our own distribution system.
But I think it's going to affect the whole lot for this problem. Okay, uh, we don't.
Um, Edmond has messaged, um, this afternoon, I guess, and said she wasn't able to attend. She probably won't be ready with her proposal until sometime later, so at this point, it's on hold.
Okay, so maybe we have until a quarter to six for the next, uh, the next one.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Sorry, but, um, if the business of the agenda is done, perhaps you could recess eat prior to your in-camera session.
Okay, so we'll do the correspondence afterwards?
Well, you could do it right now.
Yeah, I would prefer to do it now.
Yeah, let's do the.
Okay, so the correspondence, there is here an invitation to go to a conference in Jasper, Alberta Red and Park. It has never been the tradition for the town to send a counselor to that particular, um.
Why is that?
The reason being that there is not enough down-to-earth kind of information given to be able to bring back and to make a difference. So in, from what I understand and querying about, how, would that help us do our job better or not? Uh, the place that is normally the place where people go for parks and rights is in, in the fall?
They go in the, uh, spring actually.
Oh, sorry.
Recreation facilities personnel conference and that's more related to what they do.
More hands-on for what we would need.
Yeah.
And does that include Randy going to that?
Yes, Randy has.
Is that, when I read this, I thought, where's Randy involved here? And it says just councilors and I'm thinking, well, Randy's the guy really that needs to be informed, right?
Well, that's a good observation, this is why we prefer to send our staff to what is under.
Because this is a pretty pricey one.
Uh, it is.
Whether or not we send Barnes, I think he should be responsible for giving us all more lollipop bullets. Just screw it up on that.
Okay, I'll bring some lollipops for the next meeting. Okay, I'll bring some lollipops for the next meeting.
Are you missing his eight-page report?
I don't have to write this. Do an eight-page report.
Okay. Now, the next one is a United Steelworkers request for a motion to, for resolution. I have a little bit of an opinion on this one. My opinion is that we support a safe work environment at the town level. We do very well with worker compensation role. We have a safety program in place. We put resources, training, guidance, and that is a role of council is to support the local safety program that we have. I don't think that our role is to support what I require at this point. I, I don't see my role in that. Counselor Barnes?
This reading, there's some of the verbiage in here as a concern. You know, and it says here, work together to stop the killing. Well, it's an indication to me that they're blaming, as an adversary. And they're advocating that somebody is on purpose doing all this and 10,000 Canadians being killed on the job.
Well, maybe there need to strengthen at each location.
I think at each location, that's where it needs to be.
Yeah, it's at a source that we need to.
Resolve.
I agree. Okay, so any, any other thing? So we need a motion to recess?
I'll vote for recess.
Counselor Barnes, move to recess. Now for, for the public to know, after we recess, we're going to have a short eat and then we will have in-camera until about 7 o'clock, when we will have our corporal advocate come and do her RCMP report. Okay? So we recess. All in favor?
Right.
Thank you.
Counselor Edmonds.
I just keep on.